Welcome to the Board of Education's April 7, 2025 work session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the pledge led by Reverend Butler.
We just have a few announcements. As public notice, board members met an executive session with members of the Knox County Law Department just prior to this meeting. Mr. DeBlair, do you want to provide any information?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I can say that, yes, it was just a very short meeting to discuss, you know, pending or potential litigation, and there was no deliberation. And it's a typical type of meeting pursuant to Smith versus Anderson County. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. DeBlair. The Student Representative Selection Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow to formalize their review of applications for the 2526 Board Student Representative. The application deadline was March 13, and the Board Office received 19 submissions from students at eight different high schools. The appointed selection committee consists of Ms. Bike, thank you so much for serving on that committee, I think that's a fun one, so I'm excited for you; Corey Lotner as Assistant Superintendent of Strategy; Principal Lacey Hatfield from Region 2; Parent Tanya Williams from Region 3; Sophia Elkins as our outgoing student rep from Region 4; and Community Representative Andrew Asakwe from Region 5. I know all of us are looking forward to receiving a report and introduction of our new student rep from Ms. Bike at our main meeting. Also, you've already been alerted, but I just want to announce publicly that our called meeting previously scheduled for Thursday, April 24th, for consideration of our fiscal year 2026 budget, has been rescheduled to Tuesday, April 29th at 5:00 PM in this boardroom. Our annual calendar and the district calendar, found on the KCS website, were updated a few weeks ago, but I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that date change. Are there requested changes to this meeting agenda? Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Dr. Ricewick, do you have a superintendent's report?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you just said we don't, only a few announcements, and I'll start with, mine's a little long, so sorry.
I was gonna ask, is it another?
Last month was short.
Last month was short, yes. We're due for a long one.
Yeah, well, this is my favorite time of the year, coming back after spring break. We have so much to start celebrating, and so that's why it's lengthy, to talk about some of these things. So, I'd like to start by highlighting some exciting news for 865 academies. We were recently invited to host a study visit focused on our high school transformation for the education foundation leaders from across the country. These leaders were in Knoxville for a national conference and had expressed an interest in learning about the 865 Academy's work. During the visit, guests heard from school, business, and student leaders about the 865 academies and how they're preparing students for life after graduation. They also had the opportunity to see firsthand the incredible work of, that's happening at Fulton High School and also at Ellinan STEM Academy. The feedback we received was overwhelming and positive, reinforcing the dedication and hard work of our high schools in preparing students for success. We're proud of the progress we're making and grateful for the opportunity to share that with the national audience. I also want to thank Mike Taylor, CEO of Knox Education Foundation and President of the National Association of Education Foundations, for this opportunity to showcase the incredible work happening in the 865 academies. On another exciting note, we hosted our annual recruitment fair at West High School on Saturday. Elementary, middle, and high school principals from across the district were on hand to meet with candidates and share ideas about their hiring needs. I was able even to visit with a few prospective candidates and share a little bit about our philosophy behind recruiting and retaining great educators. Over the last three years, we've invested more than $119 million in staff, and it's paying off for sure. If you remember, we started this school year out with only six teaching vacancies. This is huge when we consider the impact an educator makes on students. Having a great educator in every classroom is key to the success of our district. At this time, we have fewer than 100 teacher vacancies. Without perspective, you go, well, that sounds like a lot, right? Typically, this time of year, I was checking with Adrian Rucker, I called him before we came to the meeting, typically we're around 450 at this point, going into the hiring season. So, a great start last year, and very few, it's like, well, 100, probably less than that as we finish placing people where they are going into this year, which is really what the goal, I think, was a few years ago, to get to a place where we are staffed, and now we're talking about just really trying to recruit the highest of quality people to join our team and continue to be part of that. So, that was really good. We're continuing to recruit talented educators and support the staff that we have as we work toward our goal of zero vacancies by next year. Alex Moesman, our Director of Talent Acquisition, that's his goal every year, and they're doing a great job of getting there. I want to give a huge shout out to our Business and Talent Division, especially to our talent acquisition and HR teams for their hard work to ensure we have great educators in every classroom. Speaking of business and talent, as you know, we're proposing the budget, or, yeah, we're proposing our budget on April 29th, and Ms. Henderson just talked about that. We look forward to previewing our budget proposal at our community meeting. The meeting will be at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, April 15th here at Summer Place, and will be an opportunity to hear more about the budget for next school year and how we're aligning resources to drive the work of our four priorities to meet the needs of our schools. For anyone who can't make the meeting, it will also be a live stream on knoxschools.org. We look forward to sharing more then. Last two things, we're getting there, I promise. Testing season, just speaking a little bit to that, I just want to say this, I really appreciate even Saturday, walking around, talking to the principals, just how they are approaching that now. I mean, I think there was a time period when testing meant like, everyone was nervous and everyone was scared and those things. I think just, just because we've normalized a lot more of how we use assessment, teachers are using it a lot more, they're understanding it's a chance to show what you know, I really am happy with that, not saying all anxiety is gone for assessment, but I think they've done a really good job at the school level working on that. So, I want to also remind everybody that testing will begin next week. As a former teacher and parent, I know testing can be a source of anxiety for students and families, but at its core, that's funny, I'm not a former parent, I'm still a parent, but a former teacher and parent, that just hit me. It's important to remember that testing is just a measure of learning. At KCS, we view assessment as part of the learning cycle. What do students, what do we ask? What do students need to know? How do we know we know it, that they know it, and what do we do when they don't? That's really our learning process. So, assessment happens throughout the year, sometimes through quick checks, sometimes through more formal assessments, and this spring window is just another one of those. We're already seeing promising results from our fall window. Dr. Wilson has updated us on a little bit, we've heard what we've heard. Dr. Wilson has updated us on a little bit, we've heard from the high schools already, it's very promising, and we plan to continue that momentum through the end of the year. So, parents, please encourage your students, tell your students to stay, to tell your students it's just another day. Love them well, feed them well, and let them know that you and their teachers are proud of their progress that they've made for this year. And finally, last but certainly not least, education has been a prominent topic in state and national conversations recently. I want to let the Board and our community know that our focus has not changed in the last three years due to these conversations. At KCS, we have and will always remain focused on providing a high-quality education for every student, allocating our resources closer to the students for the highest impact, and maintaining a continuous improvement mindset. We're always monitoring state and national conversations pertinent to our work, and any time changes occur, our commitment will always be to evolve, to meet the needs for all of our students. We also know that speculating on things that may or may not happen, or rushing to comment or action before we receive clear guidance from the relevant agencies, only leads to confusion and frustration. In meetings with our principals recently, I was able to remind them of the great progress they have made in recent years, by staying focused on the work and putting our students first. Here's just a few examples, it's funny how fast this happens and what great job they've done, and we go, wow. Three years ago, the state introduced new legislation around third-grade retention and promotion. It was a brand, I was a brand-new superintendent at that time, and I remember the immediate reaction. Parents were scared, the schools were asking if they, if we needed bigger third-grade classes, like, that was the fear, we were, how are we gonna do this? We're gonna have a bunch of third grades, we're not gonna have many kids in fourth grade. This was all before we'd received any guidance from the state on the specifics of that law. As a district, we chose not to focus on the uncertainties, but instead to focus on the strategies that we know work, early intervention and high-quality Tier 1 instruction. Our academics and student success divisions developed a plan to address learning gaps, including tutoring and summer learning camps. Since the law passed, we've had fewer than 40 students retained each year. Last year, the state passed a new law related to materials in school libraries. We didn't panic. We took our time to explore law and the guidance provided by the state before developing a plan to bring ourselves into alignment with the law. In doing so, we were also able to balance the need for compliance with the purpose of school libraries, to inspire love and reading and expose students to new ideas. Thanks to this approach, we were able to create a plan that leverages the expertise of our highly-trained librarians and puts multiple eyes on our materials for evaluation. These are the types of results we get when we slow down and plan intentionally. We've seen the same thing happen with our 865 academies. We knew four years ago that it wasn't enough for students to walk across the graduation stage. They needed to be prepared for the next step in their life, whether that's enrollment, enlistment, or employment. So, that's why we created this academy's model, which leverages meaningful partnerships with local businesses and hands-on experiences to prepare students to graduate with confidence for their next steps in lives. KCS stands ready to become a model for public education in the state and in our region. Our leaders are prepared to respond to any changes that we face. In the meantime, we'll do our best to keep our eye on the work of the four priorities, and when we do that, our students win. Madam Chair, that concludes our comments for today.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lots of updates on this agenda today.
There's a lot of updates, yes.
I'll keep this brief. So, board members of the House and Senate Education Committees, subcommittees, all those have closed now. Several bills that, if you want to follow up and keep an eye on, around maintenance of local funding effort, capital project trust, cooperative purchasing agreements, some clarification there, academic or athletic eligibility when transferring schools, some of those things, but a couple that we have talked about in here, one is the school lotteries, the ability for schools to conduct, school sport organizations to conduct a lottery. That bill is on the agenda, House Resolution 146, so there's a possibility that may pass, and we can have cakewalks and all that fun stuff, you know, the exciting times. And then, the other one that is a bill related to funding for special education preschool students, and I think we've spoken about that in here, so we'll see where those bills go. The only other legislative thing is, we have on the agenda, actually, for the 10th, is Related Education Freedom Act and the teacher bonuses, and we'll talk a little more in-depth about that, obviously, when that, we get to that item. Thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Christie, naming facilities committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to punt this one to Mr. Wright, if that's okay?
Okay, yeah.
Because he's on that committee, and this is actually exciting times for Gibbs, I guess.
Yeah, great idea. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Christie. The Naming Facilities Committee met on Friday, March 7, to consider the nomination of Morgan Wallen for the naming of the Gibbs High School baseball field, which was submitted to the Board Office by Principal Jason Webster. Mr. Webster and Athletic Director Dustin Minett were present at the committee meeting and shared information regarding the support Mr. Wallen has provided, not only to Gibbs High School, but also to other Knox County schools and the entire Knox County community. Board members have the full nomination packet that includes multiple letters of support, not only for Mr. Webster, but Gibbs High School Athletic Director Dustin Minett, baseball coach Jeff Davis, Mayor Glenn Jacobs, District 8 County Commissioner Adam Thompson, former District 8 County Commissioner Richie Beeler, and community member Steve Hunley. As the committee discussed the nomination, it was also noted that no communications in opposition of any kind have been received, so the committee voted unanimously to move forward with our recommendation to the Board for approval of the nomination. The nomination is listed as 9C on our April 10 regular agenda, and we can have discussion when we review our agenda items.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Back to you, Mr. Triplet. Clothing Center Committee update?
Yes, Clothing Center, we met on January 27 and voted to send out a public notice, and working, obviously, to see what other agencies might want to be involved in that. They were asked to submit a letter by February 28 and a full application by March 14. There were a couple of agencies stating that they, even though they wanted to continue partnering with KCS to meet student needs, they were not necessarily wanting to be involved in the Cedar Bluff Auxiliary Campus and the Clothing Center, and so, we did receive one joint letter of intent and application from the KCS School Department, Culture Department, and the Knoxville Dream Center. So, KCS social worker supervisor Heather Willis was present at the meeting on March 24 and reviewed that proposal with us, answered some questions. So, we've reviewed that and voted unanimously to recommend the joint proposal received for Board approval. Mr. DeBlair was present as well and confirmed that an MOU with Knoxville Dream Center would be needed. So, the joint proposal and the MOU will be on our May agenda, most likely. So, that is the plan.
Awesome. Thanks, Mr. Triplet. All right, back to you, Ms. Christie. Y'all could just play ping-pong. Strategic Plan Committee update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In my last report, you may recall that the Strategic Plan Committee had met with representatives of Accenture LLP earlier in the day, on March 3, to review finalized stakeholder engagement information and do a high-level review of proposed strategic plan goals. Following that meeting, the committee had tentatively planned to reconvene on March 31 to receive our first rough draft of the strategic plan, and to enter the final stage of preparing a proposal, proposed plan for full Board consideration in May or June. We're still hopeful that we can have a plan for the Board to review in May or June, but we did have to delay the meeting a little bit with Accenture to allow them more time to finalize the draft, and they are working diligently, and this, of course, isn't something we want to rush, because we do want the plan to make sure that, you know, it meets the Board's expectations and serves KCS well over the next five years. So, you will receive a notice as soon as our next meeting date and time is confirmed, and I look forward to keeping you up to date on our work.
Awesome, thank you. Dr. Brown, do you have a special education update for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the work that we're doing in the area of special education. Specifically, if you'll remember, we had hoped tonight that we would be receiving a report from PCG, their final report out, on the analysis they've done, and while all along I was afraid that that may be a really lofty goal, and I was a little disappointed that they didn't make it, I will say I meet with PCG on a weekly basis to have check-ins, and I am, continue to be impressed with their sticking to the integrity of their research, making sure that the numbers they have around staffing and around budgeting and around allocation within our district are accurate so that they can give us the best recommendations moving forward. So, we'll look forward to hearing from them on May 5 at our next work session. I did want to share with you, in the meantime, just some of the work that's been going on, some things that have been happening here lately. Most recently, we have just wrapped up state monitoring. So, for those of you who don't know, I know that just seems, you know, what is monitoring? Every year, there are 14, what we call APRs, those are Annual Performance Report indicators, that the state looks at, things like IEPs, LRE data, graduation rate, attendance rates, just all the different data we can collect on students with disabilities. And what they do is they look for patterns or trends, and then they recommend training or improvements within the district. I will say that we are one of five districts in the state who have annual monitoring. Most districts only do that once about every five years, but because of our size and the amount of resources that are allocated to Knox County, Metro Nashville, Shelby County, Hamilton County, and Williamson County, are the five, we are monitored every single year. This year, had some really good results. Specifically, they were very impressed with our level of data analysis around our students. The state provides us with a data dashboard, and that's what most districts use to track the progress their students were making. Our department actually meets every three months to discuss every single child who has a reading or a math goal, and to monitor their progress, making sure they're making adequate gains toward those goals that have been set for them, so much that Summer Robertson, one of the special education interventionists at the state level, actually asked us to come and present at the Regional Directors Meeting. So, again, this is an area that we were really able to shine and start working toward, as we've talked about, being a model district in this area for data analysis in the state of Tennessee. They did recognize some areas where we needed to grow, obviously. This year's finding was around transition plans, and so we're going to continue to work on our students as they transition. They pulled over 117 plans, there's a new set of standards, we're working with academics to make sure we align our transitioning with the post-secondary plans of the 865 academies. So, still work to be done there, but again, we feel like we're moving in the right direction. You may remember a story that I shared at my last update about a playground situation that had been brought to our attention from one of my special ed council members. That actually has grown, so I think that that one situation has made us realize that we need more of a systemic change. So, tonight, you're going to see an agenda for some additional playgrounds to be approved for elementary schools that have been funded by CEF, and again, it will be supplemented by Dr. Adams' department to make some more changes for greater accessibility. Moving forward, I've met with CEF, and they're actually going to be changing their scope of work to ensure that all students have access to our playgrounds. So, that's really exciting, and again, just a credit to the work that's been done in conjunction with the special ed council. Also, wanted to touch on some, our newsletter that we put out monthly. Communications, obviously, an area that we always want to improve. This year, we have seen a significant uptick in our views and interactions by parents and families. So far, newsletters have been accessed 5,797 times, families have clicked on 315 links to resources that are embedded in the newsletter, and 753 have watched included videos within the newsletter. The biggest increase we've actually seen is our engagement with Spanish-speaking families, and has almost matched our engagement with families who speak English, so that's really exciting. And lastly, I would like to give a couple of school shout-outs. As you know, Dr. Ryswick and the assistant superintendents all do school visits to pulse check and see how things are going. If you recall, a little over a year ago, we rolled out the KCS Way for Special Education. I want to give a shout-out to two schools and principals who are really owning those changes that we're asking them to make. In recent school visits, I want to thank Dr. Cutter at Bluegrass Elementary and Mr. Brent Glenn at Carnes Middle for embracing the change and posting IEP protocols in their meeting rooms. Obviously, we've seen two, we have 91 schools, as you can imagine. Dr. Ryswick tries to remind me all the time that these big systemic changes really take three to five years to take hold, and as I've shared with you all previously, I'm not the most patient person in the world. Ms. Henderson, we've also talked, and you've reminded me multiple times, that our kids can't wait three to five years, and obviously, I can't agree with that more. So, I will say, in closing today, that I am encouraged to see some of the progress we're making, but as always, we are never satisfied, and we're going to continue to do better. So, we're going to continue working to improve and be the state's model district for special education. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Awesome. I appreciate that, look forward to May's presentation as well. Thank you, Dr. Brown. All right, we will move into our regular meeting agenda. Get that pulled up. All right. Item C, Items and Contracts, C1 or 2? Do we have any questions or discussion about 1 or 2? 3 or 4? 5 or 6? 7 or 8? Or 9? All right, moving on then to Grants. A or B? C or D? Or E? All right, moving on then to Contracts. A or B? C or D? Or E? Ms. Fontana-Ridley?
I just had a couple of questions, because I did a little bit of research. Is there a law that says that we have to have only one company?
Are we talking about E?
Yes.
For the 403B?
Yes.
Ms. Simogorn, I don't believe so. Ms. Simogorn, do you want to answer that question for E?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontana-Ridley, no. There's not a law that says we only have to have one.
Then, I guess my next question is, because of the concerns that have happened this week with the market downturn, I mean, people have lost thousands of dollars in their retirement, their 401Ks, whereas Value Teachers Company has a fixed indexed annuity, where the teachers, whatever they put into it, they're not going to lose that money. They may lose money that they have grown, but they won't lose the invested money. So, I just think that there's going to be a lot of people, there will be a lot of people who are concerned about losing a lot of money. And so, I think maybe we need to think about honoring the couple of thousand teachers who have their money invested with Value Teachers, and honor their decisions and respect their wishes to continue with both, I mean, both companies can coexist, because from what I understand, USI doesn't have that type of a product. So, all of that will be subject to market change, I guess.
Mr. DeBlair, you want to jump in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I believe, I believe the representative from USI indicated that they did have such a product, but I'm not, I'm not going to get into that. I mean, that's for this Board to decide. I just wanted to be clear for you, board members, I mean, you all have a decision to make on this particular contract, and it's either up or down. I mean, from everything I've heard, everything I've read, procurement did their job properly. You all have a, before you, you know, a contract that includes both an administrator and a vendor, and it's been through, you know, the legal process with procurement, and it's, I mean, it's turned out the way it should have. Now, I mean, with that said, if this Board feels like, or Board members feel like, hey, we don't want to go down this road with a, you know, an administrator and a vendor combined, or for some other reason, as Ms. Fontana-Ridley just mentioned, then that's a policy decision that this Board certainly makes all the time. But from a legal standpoint, you all have a perfectly fine, valid contract if you want to take advantage of it. If you don't, it's, I mean, then, I mean, the directive is, you go back to where you are right now, and then administration would have to come up with some other plan. But it's either up or down, so.
Do you have more? Oh, okay, okay.
So, if we were to approve the contract, does that exclude Value Teachers from doing anything in Knox County, or can they come back and get back in, or remain?
It's a good question, Ms. Fontana-Ridley. So, I mean, if you approve the contract, what will happen is, then, USI So I mean, if you approve the contract, what, what will happen is then, then USI Consulting will be the, both the administrator and, and the sole vendor. That's what, that's the plan that's before you. So, so the answer is no. Value Teachers would not be able to continue to, to draw, you know, payments from the school system.
Is it possible that in the future, they could come back in? Or is this for a certain amount of time?
Ms. Hemelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot Ridley. The contract is for a specific term, the, the contract that's on the agenda. So for that period of time, the USI would be the single vendor. And then at the expiration of the, the contract, we may choose to do a new RFQ. So there's no guarantee of when, when any other vendors could potentially become a vendor if this contract's approved.
Ms. Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is someone from USI here tonight? Would it be possible? I just have a couple of questions. Is it Mr. Cross?
Welcome, Mr. Cross.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Did you miss us from last meeting? Probably not. So I just, I have a couple of questions. One would be if you do have a similar product. The other is, do you offer any type of, I guess it's a retirement calculator? I know when mine changed once, I was given a tool to use where I could put in, you know, my age and the age I wanted to retire and, and it gave me the different options like, you know, the product like Similar to Value Teachers would have been one option, then it discussed the pros and cons with those, and then also listed other options as well. And I'm just wondering if you have any kind of, and it might be in the contract and I might have missed it.
Bob Cross, by the way, 900 South Gate Street, Suite 1796, President of the Central and Southern Regions for USI Consulting Group. So if I, yes, we do, a couple of responses to the question, in question. We do have a product or fund that does have a guaranteed interest rate that cannot change in terms, the principal cannot drop, nor can the interest rate credit. There are no commissions in the product, the system that's available to personnel. It mirrors, duplicates the system that's available for, for Knox County. Just to make a note, the delivery of these products and systems has changed dramatically over the last decade, particularly in the last five years. The system that is in place, group annuity product or something similar, was pretty prevalent at that point in time. We have changed out our systems to be more competitive and I empathize, believe me, I get it. I've lost a couple of clients and it was very painful because I did not move quickly enough to change from that current system to a more modern, up-to-date system. Again, we have no commissions in any of our products. We are also, there are no fees or charges involved. If a person wants to move from this plan to another plan, there may be some regulatory requirements, but there are no fees, no charges. If you've got $10,000 in your account, you want to move to another provider, another 403B, you can do so. You can take $10,000. So there are, again, no, no fees in that regard. Couple of other notes that came up in the last meeting, just to make sure I addressed everything. We do have local staff. They are fully licensed. They have a Series 63, Series 6, so they're able to talk about any of these products. With a group annuity, you only have to have an insurance license. If you're talking to individuals about their own personal accounts and there are securities involved, you do have to have certain securities licenses. We have two individuals that are employed or were employed, they're now with our firm, Janice Samar and Jennifer Reynolds. They're former Board of Education employees, extremely sharp, very capable individuals, thrilled. You did a great job. Thrilled to have them on board with us and they are available. We also have an individual who's an attorney and a CFA. We have individuals who are very fluent Spanish and they can certainly communicate effectively with any individual that you might have on staff. So be glad to answer, I hope I answered your question, be glad to answer any other questions. I appreciate the difficulty comparing different products in this, I mean, I appreciate that. I would say that the, the evaluation committee went through that and did the work for you, but I, I respect the fact that it is not easy. It's not easy.
And I think that, you know, what, the biggest, one of the biggest concerns I've heard are the fees that would be associated with moving from Value Teachers to another account. But now, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say that if, when you do this, you do not have those fees for people to move to other vendors?
So a couple of different areas. One is if you are on our system and you've moved to another provider, there's no, no fee regardless. So have you been there a month and you've got $10,000? You can move $10,000. With their system, if you're there less than 10 years, as I understand it, then your first year, you're going to have a 9% hit. So I've got $10,000, I want my money. You're going to lose 9% of it. The second year, 8% of it, and so forth. And that's a function of their product and their system. It involves the front of commissions and, and whatever, it is what it is. So the commissions for selling those funds, so that's part of it. We do not have that. Now, at the same time, if a person wants to move in their current contract, and as I understand it, if they could stay where they are, they would not be able to make additional contributions, but they could stay where they are in the current contract. If the individual did decide to move, we have a, a means by which that penalty can be absorbed. The crediting rate instead of three might be two and three quarters or what have you, but then they could move that money. Once they move the money, then they could move it out without a penalty if they chose to do so. So again, I get this is very complicated. This is not easy. I get it. I want to make sure I'm not disparaging their product and nor the individuals. This is just a different approach, a different product, different system. I just, I think our system reflects the current marketplace, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Cross before we let him sit down?
I have one question first.
Okay, go ahead.
So do your products, they have penalties?
They do not.
No penalties at all?
Zero.
Anything that anyone would assign up for, they're not signing, are they signing any contracts?
No, this is a great question. So this is a, I think of, well, it's Knox County, so you go online. And we have individuals who can meet with people to talk about the system, but you go online and you enroll, or we go through the Board of Education as you choose, but ordinarily, you'd go online. So you would sign up, if you've met with us and you've got all the materials, and then online, you would choose which fund or funds, which you want to invest.
So would that be a contract? Is there a contract?
No contract.
It's, it's just surprising to me that there would be zero fees, zero penalties.
Another great point. We are piggybacking on Knox County. They have, it's public information, a half a billion dollars in their defined contribution system. Because of that, we're making that same system available to the Board of Education. We do the same thing for the Family Justice Center, the Knox County Drug Commission or the Coalition. So any, you know, we live here, work here, so we make that available to the community, if you will. At least if it's attached or tied in some way to the county.
I think that's all my questions, but I do have.
Okay, yeah, we'll ask and then we'll go back to any board members who have discussion and questions. Ms. Templeton?
I do have a question, just for clarity, two questions. The contract says that it would start March 1st, 2025, so this might be from Ms. Hemelgarn, but I do have a question for you as well. So does that mean that everything is, if, if this passes on Thursday, it's retroactive March 1st?
Madam Chair, Ms. Templeton, I believe that what we had discussed last time, and we would need to make a notation on the contract, is July 1, that USI was agreeable to a start date of July 1, which would account for Ms. Christie's concern for employees that were retiring this school year to be able to finish out with a current provider if they had one.
Thank you. That was something that I wanted to make sure was resolved because you guys forgot to have that conversation. My second conversation, my second point of clarity is about the, the current teachers who are invested with Value Teachers. When I was looking at reports of the fees that they would have to pay to switch, ranged from $2 to $10,000 for one teacher could be penalized $10,000. So, and, and up higher, actually. And that's the way that their system is set up and.
Yep.
No harm, no foul, that's.
The way it works.
The way it works, right. So I have a concern about forcing fees and potential loss of retirement opportunities for teachers. But from what you were just saying to Ms. Christie is that those fees can somehow be absorbed. Are there some sort of bridge?
A bridge, great, good. So one, I don't like to be forced in terms of the date. I don't, nobody does. So I think this is a matter of, July 1 is great with us, so I want you to be comfortable with the decision you're making. So in terms of, yes, so each individual, I think, would have to look at where they are now. And so there are various provisions in those contracts. There's a nursing home, there's some other life, life insurance provisions in terms of death, and so there's a bunch of stuff in those contracts. So an individual might look at it and say, this is worth it to me. I know there's some expense, I know there's whatever, so I'm going to stay where I am. So it's great, no problem. Others may say, well, okay, this is an advantage to this and that's a decision I want to make. And it's not really the dollars, it's a percentage of the, the fund that will be impacted. So it's three, three and a half percent on 300,000 is obviously a different dollar number and the penalty on, on, as opposed to 10,000. So it's going to be the percent of the contract that would be, or the dollar value that would be impacted. But in no circumstances, these, the individuals that work for me are all salaried, so there's no incentive at all for them to encourage or try to push or dissuade someone from staying where they are. So that's absolutely an individual decision.
Right, and I understand that. When I'm, when I say, you know, between $2 and $10,000, that is the percentage that they would be impacted. So, so they may have $100,000, but they're being impacted $10,000, whatever it is, for easy math. So, and that, and that is where my concern lies. And I appreciate the ability for teachers to be able to keep their accounts at Value Teachers, but they will not be allowed to continue to deposit into Value Teachers. Correct? So would not have that compound interest gain over the course of their tenure at KCS.
Madam Chair, Ms. Templeton, that's correct. And that, that is, is one thing that I wanted to clarify in my response to Ms. Fontenot Ridley, just to, to make sure that what I said was clear. If the contract is approved, Ms. Fontenot Ridley had asked, could, could Value Teachers come back? The accounts, if, if the contract with USI were approved, there could be, at the time of the contract, no more contributions to current accounts with Value Teachers or Core Bridge, and then no new clients, but the, the teachers' accounts would still exist there unless they've selected to move them somewhere.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Cross? And then we'll go back to board members who have general questions and discussion. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Cross.
You're welcome. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I absolutely understand why we would want to have a contract and want to have an administrator and vendors. When I talked to Scott Bolton, who I understand is no longer here with KCS, maybe like six months ago, he had said that there was an opportunity to have multiple vendors and that's, I was surprised to see this contract that didn't have multiple vendors after having that conversation with him. This, this seems, the conversation seems to be going of a, like, USI versus Value Teachers and generally makes me feel like I'm making the choice for teachers and I don't feel like I have the authority to make that choice for teachers, especially in the market like Ms. Fontenot Ridley brought up, where people are losing a ton of retirement money. And we already know our teachers don't get paid enough. You know, that is a big conversation and, yeah, I mean, I, I understand that Value Teachers charges things. I think when you sign a contract with them, though, you understand it. I've talked to many of my principals and other teachers and I'm not necessarily one to sign up for things that, where people have any sort of sales commissions or anything like that, but I also know I'm not everybody. And I spoke with one of my principals recently who said that their Value Teachers person was very respectful and only came when asked and really followed the rules that the principal had put in line for visiting the school, bringing things to the school, and had generally had a great relationship. So, I mean, I, I understand UCI's, or USI's product is great and it's great that there are no penalties, but I, I just really don't feel like I have the authority or want to have the authority to make this choice for teachers, especially given the market. So I will probably not vote in favor of this, but I would be in favor of something where USI was the administrator and there were multiple vendors. Thank you.
Mr. Triplett?
Ms. Hemelgarn, a couple of questions. So we, let's say we vote no on this, what is KCS's next steps? You know, I mean, obviously, I, I agree with the need for a contract, I think that makes sense, but if we vote no, then we don't have a contract, so what does, what does KCS do with that?
Sure. Madam Chair, Mr. Triplett, there's a, a couple of options. What, what I think that we, we would recommend, and, and we've heard various board members agree with the fact that we do need a contract or contracts, plural. So if this was, if this contract item was not approved, there are, we see two primary options where we, where we could go. Either split it up, do an RFQ for the third-party administrator, and then an RFQ for multiple vendors. I will say that just like, if we go that route, just like when we started this process, we did not know who the successful bidder was going to be. If we go through that process, we do not know who the successful bidders will be. There's no guarantee that any one vendor would get a contract if we go that route. So I do just want, just want to name that, since I know that we're talking about specific organizations right now. We would follow the procurement process in, in doing those two. There's, there's also an option to freeze 403Bs, that that would allow current participants with either one of our two vendors to continue their plans throughout their employment, but no new 403B participation. And, and employees would still have the option of the state 401K or 457, which the state administers. There would, there would not need to be a plan administrator for those two items, but may still need to seek a, a plan administrator for the current accounts.
And then the RFQ we put out, nothing against it, no issue with it, but it, it was set up to be a administrator and a vendor, and so the current providers would not have, they had no way to even apply for that, correct? Because they're not an administrator and?
Both current providers did.
Okay, and they both have that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Good to hear. That's the only questions I got. Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Were, the decisions made just downtown or were the teachers in on any information that things could be changing?
I think, are you asking kind of what the process looks like for an RFQ?
Or what the process, what, what the impetus was to make this change? I mean, did teachers ask for it? Is it something that was, the decision was made without their input? I'm just not sure.
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot Ridley, the decision was made, we, we talked a little bit last time, you know, we, the district as the current plan administrators, but also as the employer, has certain fiduciary requirements. And we also want to provide the greatest level of protection to our employees. So the, the decision has been in talks for quite some time, but that we needed contracts with providers. for quite some time, um, but that we needed contracts with providers, and the mechanism that we would use to get those is the, the RFQ process in this scenario. But yes, the district, um, the Business and Talent, um, Division made the recommendation, the decision to search for those together, the vendor, um, and the third-party administrator in one RFQ. And then, once we get to either that process or, you know, two vendors, a, a third-party administrator and multiple vendors, there's not input, um, from either our department or, other than maybe if, if our department's participating in the procurement process, or teachers, on which company it is, that the procurement process would guide, um, who the successful vendor or vendors would be.
I do think, you know, there was a speaker, a public forum speaker last month, and I thought he was pretty compelling, who does federal, works with federal contracts, um, about unbundling basically the current RFQ. So, there would be two, um, RFQs, like you were talking about, one for the third-party administrator and one for the provider. And so, can you kind of talk about why there was one RFQ versus why that wasn't done or looked into?
Sure, um, so, like I said, our primary goal was, was securing contracts.
Mm-hmm.
And, and a plan administrator.
Yeah, and I do agree that a contract is needed, absolutely.
Sure, um, and so, I, I would say there are several reasons. I'd call out probably the top two as cost to the employee, you know, it wa- once we, once we unbundle, then there is a separate cost for administration, um, that would likely eventually make it to our employee, whether that's charged to the vendors or, or to the employee directly. And then, the second would be an effort to have the competition occur during the procurement process and not in, in direct sales to our employees.
Do you have an idea of how much that fee would be?
I, I couldn't estimate, um, right now, no.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or discussions, or discussion? All right, moving on then to regular agenda items, nine A or B. Yes, Ms. Pike.
Thank you. Um, I am very happy to see a replacement portable on here for Rocky Hill Elementary School. I was wondering, um, what the ti- if we have a timeline on that?
We do not, uh, for the simple fact that the board has to approve it first.
Mm-hmm.
And so, once it's board-approved, we'll work with the vendor to see, uh, the timeline. And we also have to look at doing construction on the site, uh, so, we'll, we'll get a, a good estimate and a timeline once it goes through, um, once the board approves it and it goes through County Commission. We'll, we'll be able to have a timeline within the next few weeks.
Do you think that we would, it, would it be reasonable to ask for an update at our May meeting?
We could have an update, uh, again, it, it really depends on what the market is for portables right now. I know, uh, when we were looking at portables last year, uh, it was, uh, estimated twelve month leeway for portables to arrive. I think that is significantly reduced, and so, uh, again, we, we should have that by then.
Do you anticipate with all of the things going on right now, um, that this is a adequate price to secure a portable?
I can't speak to that. Uh, it, it's, the, the cost could be in flux, uh, and that would be something that we'd have to come back to the board for and have a conversation.
Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Dr. Reiswick.
If I could, and Dr. Reiswick, maybe you could speak to this, just to talk about the cost of portables, I think, I, I remember we get them for two fifty like three years ago, so, I mean, the fact that six twenty-five's in there, I think we're seeing, the, I mean, that's, it's gone up considerably in a short amount of time, but that does, does seem, we'll see what the market says, but that's quite over, although, they've over-doubled in probably three years.
Yeah, and, and sorry, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Pike, uh, Dr. Reiswick, uh, so, they were, in, in a few years ago, they were closer to eight hundred thousand to a million dollars for a new portable. Uh, we work real closely with the vendor, they're able to get better prices, they're able to do a lot of the construction work, and so, that cost has significantly reduced. It's one of our term bid contractors, and so, that is a great price for a new portable. Normally, we're looking at used portables, when you look at the plumbing and the infrastructure, and so, normally, that's a used portable at six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so, it's, again, one of the reasons we're looking at solutions instead of putting a Band-Aid on things with a portable, because they're not affordable like they used to be at one point in time.
Ms. Pike.
I have one more question for you, I'm so sorry. I was curious, and I apologize if I missed it, um, but if I could, uh, receive a report on the ages of all the portables for District Four? I, I mean, if you want to do the whole, like, all of KCS, I'm fine with that, but I'll also just accept mine.
So, we do have the ages of all the portables, um, for the district, so I can certainly share that with you, we do have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, that's a good ask, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Moving on then to C or D, and I know that we do have the principal and AD of Gibbs High School are, are here, I believe, if they want to come up and speak. No pressure, but if you want to, you are welcome to come up and speak. Aren't you happy I called you out? Welcome.
Madam Chair, I was not expecting that, but, uh, Jason Lester, I'm the
We're glad you're here.
Principal of Gibbs, and, um, I think everything in the information that you all have received, uh, is, really kind of speaks for itself, but, um, when you, when we started looking and considering this, we were just honestly amazed at how much, uh, uh, just goodwill and, and things that are done by, uh, Mr. Wallen and his foundation, his mother, uh, former Knox County Schools educator as well, uh, has done for, uh, certainly Gibbs, uh, for, for obvious reasons, but also Knox County as a whole, and, and truthfully, we were just astonished at the amount across the state and amount around the country. So, while this, uh, uh, request to name the field after Mr. Wallen is, uh, certainly, um, special to us at Gibbs, in, in, in our eyes, it's also, uh, a, a good gesture for Knox County Schools because of all of the work that, uh, and, and money donated, uh, by Mr. Wallen's foundation to probably most of the districts sitting in this room, so, we, we're obviously, uh, are in favor of, of doing this and, and believe that this will be a partnership that will, uh, benefit us, uh, in the future as well.
Awesome. Thank you, sir, thank you. Is there any more questions or discussions on this item? All right, we'll move on, and Steve, could you, or Mr. Triplett, could you talk to, um, item D, please?
I can. I know, uh, most of you know, the Education Freedom Act was signed into law in February, and part of that included a provision, uh, for a one-time teacher bonus of two thousand dollars. To receive that or participate in that, districts had to pass a resolution, which is on this agenda, uh, to vote on Thursday. Uh, TSBA provided some model language, uh, which we took, and KCS staff and Mr. Dupler took that and made some adjustments to it, so, just want you to be aware of the, the couple of adjustments that were made. One was just the definition of an existing educator, uh, just to make sure, you know, how that is defined, and, um, that can be defined differently by different folks, and we wanted to make sure that was clear based on, um, state law and all of that, so that is in, in the, in the, uh, resolution. And then, also, um, just some language that clarifies that those funds come from the state. It is not a, uh, KCS-funded bonus, um, but they, that they come from the state. So, uh, Ms. Lautner is the one who helped with a, a lot of the language, obviously, Mr. Dupler, uh, Mrs. Hemelgarne, uh, the state's law defining qualifying teachers, if you have questions about that. But I know a number of you wanted this on the agenda, and so, it is here, um, and everybody obviously, you know, wants to provide those bonuses, but I just, we just want to explain kind of what we changed based on TS, what TSBA sent us, and kind of the, the reason behind that. So, with that, I'll just leave it for discussion.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Triplett, Ms. Fontenot Ridley.
I just had one question, um, the bonuses, do they get the full two thousand or are they taxed?
They would be taxed at the bonus rate.
Thank you, Ms. Pike.
Thank you. Um, I don't know exactly who would be answering this question, but just for clarity's sake, to confirm that this is something that we would need to have passed by June 1st in order for, for this to happen?
Ms. Lautner.
That is correct.
Okay. And is there, is there anything that we have to do in the meantime, um, between now potentially passing this and June 1st? For those teachers to receive their bonuses?
Ms. Pike, um, members of the board, I will say from a board standpoint, I think the answer is no, but from a staff standpoint, um, I do believe there are some back and forths Ms. Hemelgarne and her team have been engaged in, so I would turn it over to Ms. Hemelgarne. Madam Chair, Ms. Pike, I would agree with what, what Ms. Lautner said. We will get a report, a list of eligible teachers on April 15th from the state to start reviewing, and then another one on May 15th, and then a final one on June 15th. So, staff would begin, um, reviewing those lists and engaging with any, any errors that we saw in that timeframe.
Okay, and so, when we pass this, then that goes to the state, and then we just, from that list, go from there? And then, is the money transferred to us to disperse, or is it directly from the state?
Transferred to us to disperse.
Okay, so it would be on paychecks, and that would be something that would be fairly simple for them to account for on taxes and whatnot?
Yes, I mean, they, they would receive a, a pay stub, just like they would with, with other payments.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on this item? All right, moving on then to our final item, E. Ms. Pike.
Hello, thank you very much, um, so I'm trying to keep it peppy on this Monday, so...
It's a Monday.
Yeah, it, it's been a Monday for sure. So, I hope everyone's had some time to take a look at this, um, kind of where this came from. We're from, so, so many of, especially my constituents that are worried, and I absolutely agree with everything that, um, Dr. Reiswick said earlier in his update, that I appreciate our central office and our teachers and all of the work that and time that they take to make sure that they are moving accordingly and moving in the best interest of our students. Um, but I think that, that that still doesn't necessarily take away the worry of parents in the community for what could be. I know, speaking specifically for myself and the third grade and my son, uh, with the third grade retention, that, you know, while my son wasn't retained, um, he's in fifth grade and we are still working with some of the damages of him not passing the test and not passing the retest, and having a lot of struggles in school that, um, stem from that, and so, you know, while KCS is definitely going, I think, above and beyond in a lot of areas, some students are still being affected by things, and so, this kind of came from that, that I really want our community and our students to know that we have their backs and that we will continue to do everything that we have been doing, and, um, I met with Dr. Reiswick and several others, um, in going over this to make sure that, um, I was on the right track, seems to be on the right track with everything, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do feel like this is in line with, you know, a lot of the things that the state wants for education and that, um, you know, one of our four pillars is success for every student.
Awesome, does anyone have any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Ms. Pike. Moving on then to public forum, Mr. Triplett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Brandy Gerald. Brandy, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Discussion, I have additional, and so, I'd ask that.
Require a motion in a second and then approval of the board, so...
Motion made, made by Ms. Pike, the second by, was that you, Ms. Fontenot Ridley? Or Ms. Templeton? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, you have two extra minutes.
Thank you very much. I feel like we have forgotten all of the emails talking about how this is going to affect two thousand, two hundred thirty-two people in real, physical, and emotional ways by this decision. You could see by the numbers that have reached out to you that it deeply affects them. You said choosing a different provider when the experience has been nothing but positive could have serious, severe hardships. With what benefit? Sorry, okay, a little emotional. You were asked if, when we applied, if we were able to put in a third party. Yes, we had to seek out a third-party administrator. The procurement was seeking to have one company that does both. It was, um, prioritizing that. As USI is a great company, I'm not, I'm not comparing, as Ms. Pike says, we don't want to compare between, we're standing for a platform that provides choice for employees. There are different options, there are fixed annuities, there are fixed index annuities, there are variable annuities, and there are mutual funds. Both, um, the companies that are presented provide fixed accounts, we provide fixed index annuities, and USI provides mutual funds. Both have a place, both have a platform, both, in my opinion, are necessary, and in fact, we've even forgotten a variable annuity option that, um, could be an option that we could provide. It is not a comparison as to whether you are under a surrender period or paying a fee to own a mutual fund, because it is per, personal preference. If our clients keep their monies in their account for the time period that they know, go into the contract, they actually pay us, they don't pay a fee at all, one hundred percent of their account. If you give us a hundred dollars, it goes a hundred dollars into your account, it's just different. Some people want to pay the mutual fund fees, they would rather have that. Those mutual fund fees will grow as your account grows, because it's based off your account value. We're not talking about that, because it's apples to oranges. We're up here saying that we are a different company, but have great value to several people in the district. We have great value, we are fully licensed and educated in everything that we provide. So, comparing the two licensers and saying that we do not provide the best, or implying that we have sales tactics based off of all the emails that you have gotten, and you haven't heard one person saying that we are pushing a product on them. We're educating employees, we're offering their options, and we're providing a service to the district. So, to be, um, implied that we're doing differently is, is very heartbreaking to me, standing up here, knowing that there are all of our clients standing there and at home, and even thousands of people that we have talked to. I understand that this was a procurement process, it went through, you have a procurement in front of you that you could bid, um, yes on, but I will say it will affect many people. Leaving money in an account because you don't want to go to the new company will affect them. It will affect their compounding interests for their lifetime. It will affect them, it's not an, an okay solution just to say we're going to leave the money in this account and not be able to do anything with it. Or, as stated, there will be surrender periods, that question was never answered, there are surrender periods. However, if someone, um, doesn't move it or chooses to move it, it's gonna have a great impact. But the question is, why are we saying that? It doesn't have to be USI or value teachers. Let's create a platform, like Ms. Pike said, maybe USI is the plan administrator, but they administer multiple plans, let's go back to the drawing board on these things. We are a different company, and, um, to imply that our products are in the out, just research index annuities, but it's really not the point. The point is that we have a, a policy, a product that your teachers enjoy, that they're active in, and that they are not unhappy with, and so, excluding that and removing that will be a great detriment. Checking my time, sorry, and I had a list, sorry. Um, I'd like to address the TPA fees. If you do go with an independent third-party administrator, um, the, the companies that are on your platform, if it is multiple companies, they pay the administration fees. They pay those for, the client doesn't see that, the school doesn't see those in fees. Like we said before, bundling the services doesn't make sense to include and complete your IRS compliance, you ha- can have an independent third-party administrator with multiple providers in order to secure and make sure everyone has, um, what they want. I think about grocery stores, you don't find everything you want at one You don't find everything you want at one grocery store, you need multiple providers available to you to be able to. I just implore you to please keep multiple providers available in your district, and say no to the procurement. It's important.
William Mendoza. Not here? Okay. Al Holofield, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Al Holofield, Holofield Law, Knoxville, Tennessee, 11907 Kingston Pike. And just here to say a few things about, I'm an employee benefit attorney, been doing this for 33 years, have a nationwide practice that operates out of Farragut. Most months, I'm not in this state, I'm in all over this country. And the decision before this board is a serious decision. And if you haven't figured out, people are emotional about their retirement benefits. And they like to choose, not be told. And having said all that, I want to say this, Mr. Cross's house is about half a mile from my office, known Bob, if you're in our world, known him for 30 years. I'm not here to disparage anything that he says or his company. They're a great company, and as a matter of fact, we have done business together. But on the other side of this is, you've got 2,100 teachers, I've looked this up, so if AI is right, you've got about 8,800 people in Knox County here. 2,100 of them chose to do business with valued teachers. 28% of assets of this plan are with valued teachers. And all they're asking is to say, don't make us move. They've had an agreement with Knox County's school system since 2008. And to my knowledge, I haven't heard anybody complain about the service, or complain about anything else, it's just, you're going, and anytime you have that kind of mass-force decision. My family came out of a bunch of Navy background, you ever heard about slinging airplanes off a carrier deck, when you make a turn real quick? That sounds like the decision here. And I don't think anybody's saying that USI is bad. I'm just saying, just take a step back and say, is there a way to do a platform to make it work for both? And, you know, can, does, you know, valued teachers have a mutual fund option on their IPX platform? Yes. Do they operate and maintain 6,000 plans, a 403B plan? This isn't a small company. This isn't a company that's not up to date. I mean, because if that's the case, then 2,100 people we're trusting to educate our children, this group is saying, made a bad decision. That's significant. And that's a harsh communication to send to your teachers. If we trust them to educate our kids, trust them to make their retirement decisions, right? That's just a thought. So for an attorney, I'm going to give you all 10 seconds back.
Thank you. That concludes public forum.
All right, thank you, Mr. Triplet. We will move on to board forum. And Sophia had a tennis match this evening, so that's why she was unable to make it tonight, so I wish her luck in that match. Reverend Butler? Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fonten Ridley? Mr. Triplet? Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I'm going to take up just a little bit more of your time. It is April, I can't believe it's April already. And April, for many people, is Autism Awareness Month, or Autism Acceptance Month, depending on who you talk to and what communities you talk to. It could be labeled differently, and I want to recognize all of the communities and how they feel about it, and how autism touches them. And I empower everyone to reach out to the autistic individual, or person with autism in your life, to ask them how they would like to be addressed, and what kind of things make them feel like a whole person, because I think even in 2025, we are all kind of dealing with that. And with that, Happy Acceptance Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have some exciting things on the agenda for Farragut this month, and I just wanted to thank the board for your vote ahead of time for our new elementary school, and Dr. Reiswick, and Dr. Adams, and the teams that have worked really hard on this school, and we're excited. It's an exciting time, and I know Coach Courtney just stepped out, but the Farragut Field House is also on our agenda to vote for Friday, and that's been a community, long time in the making thing that they've been working on, so that's wonderful. On a different note, I did sign up two of my kids for summer learning camp, and I just wanted to say, awesome job to whoever made it so easy to do that. It was the easiest thing, I just opened the message, filled in like a couple things right there in the app, didn't even have to go anywhere else, so good job for making that so easy breezy. I didn't even have to go back for the second kid. It's like, do you want to do a second one? Yes, please, I do. So it was great. And just to acknowledge the restraint that I'm showing right now to not play a Morgan Wallen song, it's, I have one queued up, but I'm not going to do it, I'm going to stay semi-professional.
Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? All right, well, I'll see, we will see everybody on Thursday. With that, we are adjourned.